Okay, we'll go ahead and start our work session this morning. We appreciate Dr. Shelley White, the president of HCC here, and Dr. Bill Nolte from the superintendent of Haywood County Schools here. So first we'll have Dr. Shelley White from the community college. And welcome. Appreciate you coming today, you and Ms. Denny.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the commission for your leadership during this time of crisis for our county and our nation. So appreciate your staff as well for all their help in helping lead us through this time. So my time as the new president definitely took a shift and turn, as everyone did, adjusted during the early part of March. But we moved quickly to shift our programming online and have as many of our employees work remotely as we could, which represented about 80% of our employees. And I have to commend our staff for the speed at which they moved to continue operating, continue supporting our students during this time, and continue, you know, with their interests as well as keeping the safety and security of the campus in mind. So we've made that shift and of course are kind of working through the challenges of having most of our students work online. As you know, with workforce training, there's just some things that we can't deliver online. And so we're starting to, as we're looking at the reopening plans and following the different phases, looking at how we would phase back in some face-to-face training throughout the month as we look towards that. So looking at every classroom space, at every lab space, how would we maintain social distance within those spaces? Would we need to reduce our class sizes within those spaces? Would we need to install protective shields in between workstations, for example, or obtain additional protective gear for our students who we would be having come back? So we're working through those conversations now. And again, commending our response team there on campus for being proactive to look at those opportunities to bring our students back in a safe way. So our first priority is helping our spring students who have, will have hours to complete before they can finish up their spring classes. But the good news is the vast majority of our students who moved online back in March will finish or have the opportunity to finish on time. And then we have adjusted some of our policies to allow more leeway with students who maybe have had personal challenges or health issues during this time that they, you know, may have had job loss and just couldn't keep up with the pace of online classes, to be able to withdraw or take incompletes during this, to be able to pick up and resume later without penalty to their own academic progress. So we'll be working with each student individually and helping them transition. We very thankful to our HCC foundation, they've expanded the emergency fund for students, and we've had quite a few students take advantage of that to help with their personal bills and things during this time and support their emergency needs. So we're very thankful for that. But glad to be able to be looking forward, glad to be able to be enrolling students for summer and for fall. Our summer enrollment is, the good news is that's moving along very well. We're already at 70% of our summer enrollment last year, and we still have about a month to go before those summer classes start. So that gives us encouragement that students are looking forward, they're wanting to move on with life and keep things moving. And at the same time, we're looking again at those safety parameters of how we can keep students as safe as possible in their face-to-face classes and activity. Most of our summer classes, again, will still be online, as we're focused more immediate concern are the face-to-face labs that students would need to come back. I think, you know, a good example of that is welding. A lot of those stations are already six feet apart. So, you know, as long as we're keeping our class sizes within the limits that are allowed for gatherings, then we feel that we can set the parameters. But we've got to look at that for each space. And then unfortunately, there's some programs like cosmetology that maybe later took phase back in because you've got, you know, face-to-face contact and would have to set up a lot more parameters and guidance for that. So that may be a later phase program that we would have come back in, probably in alignment with salons and things reopening. So we're just watching each of those as those things are changing. So as we shift to our budget request, we have been having some discussions just about how the COVID-19 response may impact our county budget request. And some of that's unknown, but we feel like we've worked in some flexibility to allow us, for example, to think about our supplies and modifications that we might need to make. And we'll talk about that as we go through. So this is an overview slide, and just kind of in a snapshot, and we'll walk through each one of these line items in detail, and I'll give you a little bit more detail about them. The total current operating request represents a 3% increase over last year, primarily in our benefits cost for employees and our utilities costs. So we'll talk about that. And then we'll talk about our capital outlay request, this year being a smaller amount, as we are intending to revisit our facilities plan, number one, in light of me being new and kind of restarting that process for internal facilities discussions, but also in response to the coronavirus, as we've maybe needing to make some changes within lab spaces that could potentially impact our capital budget. So the first area is our salary and benefits. This is an increased amount over last year of $24,000, and primarily for adjustments to benefits. We had one internal equity adjustment. This represents 18 employees in our grounds, maintenance, security, and safety areas of the college. The next area is one of the larger areas as well. This is our other costs, which is materials. There's a lot in other costs, materials, supplies, service agreements. This is where we have our repairs to facilities, as well as a small amount of contingency funds. So that's where we would potentially see some shifting if we were to need to invest, like in Plexiglas shields for our workstations, or modifying within a lab space. We would potentially see an increase in this area. But we feel that we could absorb some from the discussions we've had so far within that budget that we've proposed. The next area is our professional development and travel. We've held this the same. First, from the standpoint of the likelihood that travel as a whole would be more limited in the coming at least six months or so, but just looking at those basic licenses and certifications that we need to continue for safety and security. We have pesticide license that we renew each year, as well as basic certifications for safety and security. Next is our contracted services. This is a small increase just related to our agreement for the armed resource officer, and potentially having some increases in coverage there. Next is our utilities cost, and this was one area where we projected a potential increase based on what we're hearing from Duke Energy, and estimating potentially 10% increase in that area. But other areas we anticipated being the same as last year. And finally, our insurance costs, we just look to hold that the same. We don't anticipate any increases in our insurance in the coming year. So this snapshot, like I said, is a 3% increase overall from our prior year for the current operating expense. And then the next slide is for our one piece of equipment for capital outlay that's not allowed to be a part of our current operating. And this is for a multipurpose piece of equipment to replace one that has been decommissioned, which means it's no longer working. But it's a multipurpose machine for leaf blowing, leaf collection, scraping for parking lots, snow and gravel. And this area of our budget is reduced over last year in that we pulled any project requests from our annual requests that we're bringing forward today. And we would bring forward any individual projects to you at a later time. So as we reconvene around our capital projects needs, we would bring those forward to you individually, rather than have that be tied to our annual budget. Sometimes those projects may span over a year, and that gives a little more flexibility. But also, the timing for this year seems to be better not to include those in this process. And that's it. So I'll take questions. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those. Karen Denny's here with me, our vice president of finance. I am still learning the ropes, but I got a crash course, definitely, over the past six weeks or so, as we just really had to get down to business to address the needs of the campus related to the coronavirus response.
I was glad to hear that you can have students can finish up online, I guess, and so they may be able to just finish up on schedule for this semester or so. And then I guess, did you have, how many do you think will be able to do that? Will most be able to do that?
We think about two-thirds would finish online. So we'll have, we will start celebrating with graduates here, virtually. We have put our graduation date, we rescheduled that to August, but still unsure if we would be able to hold that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you're right. Okay.
But then we would have students potentially finishing between now and then, as we're able to bring them back and have them finish up hours. Because some of the technical and trades programs have a few hours that they weren't able to do online. We had some programs that were able to shift, like welding, I think is a good example. They did some virtual and simulation kind of activities to help them get as many hours as they could, so they wouldn't be so far behind here at the end of the semester.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard some interesting comments about your online classes. I've got a, I've got a son doing that. He was telling his mother the other night, he said, well, I won't mention the other boy's name, but he said, "He's just not doing too good without any in-class instruction." And he was trying to help him, kind of tutor him a little bit, because he was having a little trouble. But I think they got whatever course, I think it's physics or something, I think they got it worked out.
Yeah, some classes do lend themselves to be better in the online environment, but then also students. We like to give our students options. And when we don't have those face-to-face options for students, I think it puts everyone at a disadvantage. So we've been trying our best to reach out individually. We've been offering a virtual tutoring lab for students who've maybe still needed some extra help with their classes. But, you know, the students we're most concerned about are the ones who've disengaged during this time. And I think that's probably what is the, kind of the worst outcome with all of this, is that we know that there are some students who just weren't able to make that shift. And we'll have to reach out, especially to them, and help bring them back into the fold as we have those opportunities to get them back on campus.
I think everybody's having to learn to adjust.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you have some questions?
I'd just like to thank Dr. White. The request that she made was not her real, real request. I think she would have liked to have had some more money, and I kind of asked her to go back to the drawing board. When our revenue projection took a downward trend, she's gone back and changed her request to fit into something we thought we could fund. I know it's not ideal, but I appreciate her work on getting it to 3%, because there were some cuts that she had to make to get to that number. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Is anybody else having any questions? Okay. Well, thank you for coming, Dr. White.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to wait just a little bit, but thank you for waiting, and thanks for coming.
That's fine. Thank you for your support.
Okay. Okay, and then next we have Dr. Nolte from our Haywood County Schools. Welcome, Dr. Nolte.
Thank you, chairman, commissioners. Would any, we, I know you have a digital copy. Does anyone want a print copy? We have some for you. All right.
I'll take one.
I like drawing.
Those things up there, that's from these, the, the lights.
You want one, Kevin?
Let me introduce our new finance director, Leanna Moody. You all are used to seeing Angie Gardner. Angie retired and told us not to bother her for at least six months. So we're trying to honor that. Leanna is our former assistant finance director, so she knows the job well, has been with us for a number of years. She did take a brief hiatus in which she went out and taught high school down at Central Haywood High School. She did a good job of that. We are very glad to have her back. She's a very smart, capable, more serious version of Angie Gardner. So commissioners, you know that through the years, we have given you quite a detailed presentation, and we're prepared to do that again, literally going through each line. If you want us to be more brave, we can. But what we did on current expense was, Leanna and I sort of brushed up on different sections, and we were going to take turns to go through each line in those sections. And then Dr. Putnam will come up after we finish with current expense, and he'll go over capital and child nutrition. So I guess the first thing is, do you want the standard, go through all the lines quickly, or would you like something a little more concise? Doesn't matter, we're good either way.
Concise is always good, I guess.
I'll tell you what, we'll go concise, but we'll stop anywhere, anywhere along the way that you would like to stop. Leanna, why don't you come up, and we'll, we'll play podium dance here, and when we each finish our section, we'll step to the side, six feet, man. I'm just teasing. So the first thing is the, oops, got the clicker here. First thing is the budget message. That's just one of those things we're expected to do in public schools. Probably the most important thing is the last three or four lines in the first paragraph where we think about the focus. And these were the focus points that we put in when we started working back in January and February. One was to try to keep our people. I think we've done a good job of that over time with your help. We have given a number of pay raises. We're certainly losing fewer people to the east where they can pay a little bit more. The second major point was to limit expansion items. We really wanted to stay as far away from new things as we could. And we don't really have any in here right now at this point. We may reevaluate it sometime next fall or next winter, depending upon how the budget goes. And I think that's up in the air for all of us right now, given the situation we're in. And then the third thing, as we move through this budget process and season, is to be aware that we are in a pandemic, and to be ready to make adjustments if we have to. We certainly don't want to make any adjustments, but it would be unrealistic not to think about that in advance. So that's the budget message. Under local current expense, like I said, Leanna and I are just going to try to take turns, oops, thank you, I'll click for you, how's that? So under, under the section of 001, that's classroom teachers. And again, without going through all the line items, you see the teachers and their mainly associated benefit costs. That's 29.5 local teachers, and that's some summer pay for football coaches and band directors and five of our lead teachers.
The next section comes in around $956,000. That's our central office administration. There we pay for our associate superintendent, the foundation director's salary, federal programs, and EC director, a portion of their salary, along with employee liabilities associated with those costs. We have membership dues, property insurance, liability insurance, and our legal and audit contracts under central office administration.
Just stop us along the way, if you want to pause and talk about any of those sections. 003 is instructional support. That's 29 local school-based clerical, local people at the school that answer the phone, do the books, all those kinds of things. 1.5 clerical in the central office, 40% of the vocational director. We have to have some local match on some of that. One bookkeeper in the technology department, 17 custodians, 80% of the transportation director, because he does some things outside of school, yellow buses. He does some things with local buses that we can't use the state money for. 23.6 skilled labor. Those are mainly in maintenance department, people who do cabinetry, electrical, plumbing, those kinds of things. Three clerical people in the finance department, 2.5 clerical folks in the HR department, and one technology specialist that does some of our technology functions in 003.
Next, we have school building administration. That's where we pick up two and a half assistant principal salaries and their matching benefits, along with an additional responsibility stopping for our school building administrations, our principals and assistant principals. We have principal staff development, copier costs, our accreditation fees, and school allocations for purchase of equipment on the school level. That comes in at $527,000.
Under 007, this is instructional support. Folks who typically have a teaching license, but they're not teaching. We include in this area the technology director, social workers, library media, specialist, guidance. Line 311 is our nursing contract with local health and human services. So those are instructional support positions in the local budget, just
Coming in at just over $250,000 is our non-contributory employee benefits, meaning longevity pay for our employees that have been employed over 10 years, bonus leave, annual leave, and mentor pay and the associated employee liabilities with that.
I'm going to do several small areas in a row, and then Leanna will do the same thing. 014 is our local vocational career technical education money. You can see most of that is equipment and materials, and then there are some benefits and duty stipend funds, $82,000. 015 is the school technology support. This is the money that we talked about a lot during the last budget cycle. We're very excited about this. I think this original idea was Dr. Putnam's. This is money that we put in to replace approximately 20% of our student devices. We hope we get most of those back. And we don't lose a year because of the COVID, but that's the $350,000 under 015. Under 027, there are three teacher assistants. We can use state teacher assistant money for our K1 teacher assistants, but we have a few middle school and a few high school. These are high school teacher assistants. I didn't look them up. I imagine that's in-school and maybe a computer lab. Under 032, that's exceptional children's program, local money. And you can see that is all supplies and materials. That can be rather expensive. About 14% of our students qualify for those services across our 15 schools. 034 is gifted money. We do also, we have state money in all of these areas, but with academically gifted, 034, we have some tutor fees, and but most of the money in local AIG is for supplies and materials, a little bit of benefit costs that go along with the tutorial. Under 036, that's our charter school transfer. You all have been very good about including that in the local count. And yes, we do anticipate transferring some $800,000 to various charter schools, some brick and mortar, some online. 054 is English language learner program, ELL. That's one teacher in that program, and the associated benefit cost for that teacher, $47,665. 056 is local transportation. Again, the state money helps us with the 70-some-odd yellow buses, but our activity buses and supplies and materials for staff vehicles and things like that, we have to pick up locally. And you can see there's a little workshop expense, some supplies and materials, and most of that is in repair, parts, materials, labor, cost. 061, that's a supply code that each school has, that buys everything from paper and ink and pencils and markers to paying for copier cost across our schools. 069, that's at-risk funds, supplies and materials. Think that goes along with our social worker services. Middle school remediation, the remediation for elementary schools is federal Title I. You all hear that a lot. That's the federal money that we use to do remediation, catch students up in reading and math at the elementary level. At the middle school and high school level, we have to use local funds. We'll need, unfortunately, probably a good bit of that the end of this year and going into next year. So 072 is middle school remediation. 301 is junior ROTC. We do receive some funding from the Navy and the Air Force, but it does not cover all of the cost. Our equivalent cost is about 2.5 of the four positions.
Next, you'll see program code 706, that's ineligible local transportation. Those are ineligible state expenses. Our local and state 56, as Dr. Nolte said, are free alibuses. And our local 56 has to mirror state 56. So these are ineligible expenses, which would be activity buses and repairs. 800 is safe schools. That's where we employ two gateguards at the high schools. And this contracted services is for our drug screening and Alert Now program. 802 is athletic coaching supplements and their associated employer liabilities with those. 803 is band and cultural arts supplement. That's for our band and chorus programs and our instructors there. 804 is high school remediation. As Dr. Nolte said, told earlier, the federal picks up elementary, so local has to support middle school and high school remediation. 805 comes in at $115,000, and that is system instructional support. Most of that's sitting in supplies and materials, and that would be for your cultural arts, summer school programs, PEAIG programs, those auxiliary programs. 806 is computer. 806 is computer system support. That comes in at $550,000. That is where we employ seven IT techs, our associated IT expenses, along with testing and media and library expenses.
807, curriculum development. We have $12,300 in workshop and some travel expenses when we're training people, especially in new methodologies. I think a lot of that will be remote learning in the future. And then about 2/3 of it is supplies and materials. Under 809 is in-school suspension. This is where we hire some of the teacher assistants. We have sub fees in there because when that person's out, they do need a sub. And then associated benefits or overtime. Also, under 809, the 311 line is the contracted services line. That $5,000 is when we do threat assessments for individuals who have indicated that they might harm someone or harm themselves. Program code 813 is the employee supplement. We have increased that a significant amount over time, and I think that's paying huge dividends in that we're not losing as many people to districts who have larger supplements. And then 815 is community public relations. That's a pretty small public relations budget for Operation Hour Size. That's mainly things like membership dues with the chamber and things like congratulation, graduate graduates, or happy holidays, printing or purchasing some of those things.
816 is employee celebration and recognition. That comes in at a little over $16,000. That's our end-of-the-year and employee of the year recognition. 827 is $190,000. That is our school resource officers, where we contract with the sheriff's department and the police departments for SROs. 838 is $11,000, and that is a lease on our Pisgah High School baseball field. And then we have $10,000 in contingency for unfunded.
I've got a question right there on SROs. Dr. Nolte?
Yes.
Can you tell me how many? Do we have one at each school now?
We now have one at each middle school and high school.
That's what I meant to ask, middle and high schools. So there is one at each one. So we're not sharing it?
Not sharing anymore. We shared for a period of time between Canton Middle and Bethel Middle. And Dr. Putnam and I worked on that last year.
That's what I thought. I just clarified.
And we were able to put a person at each of those schools. And then those folks do run to nearby elementary schools from time to time if we think something's cooking.
Okay, thank you.
The revenue purpose codes. This is the anticipated revenues. This is the county appropriation with the 2.75. Fines and forfeitures, we anticipate will come in at $390,000, and then about $20,000 for ABC revenues. I think just in full disclosure, I want to remind everyone that these are actualized numbers. We do anticipate we'll spend more than these, but we're spending down our fund balance. And we've spent over a million in the last couple of years. And so over time, we hope that those will come together, and we won't need to spend fund balance, and we'll be where we are on expenditures after about three years. And we have one year under our belt. So you'll remember in the past, those of you who've been on the commission before, there was, there was, part of the anticipated revenues was a big number that was coming out of fund balance up front. And that didn't seem very actualized because it was sitting there, and it felt like part of the budget, and it didn't feel like it was in the fund, in the fund balance. And we're just being a lot tighter now and only appropriating fund balance and putting it in there when that need has come up. I think we've made one adjustment this year, but we're trying to spend less and less of that over time and then get that to an amount that everybody feels pretty comfortable with. Any questions about that or anything else? Then we have also several views of the budget in general. The next page here with the pie chart, purpose 5,000 at the top. Oh, it's in three, it's in three slides. Okay. So on your paper copy, these are just ways of looking at the budget. It's the same total across the board. Items in the 5,000 series are instructional services, a little over half of the local budget, 8.8 million. And then purpose code 6,000 is support services, everything that's not instruction, which is 7.3 million. And then ancillary services, we have some community use contracts, community service functions, and child nutrition in the capital budget. And in the non-program charges, this is, again, the charter school with a very small contingency of $10,000. You want to click? I read through the pie chart there. And then if you look at it through object codes, again, the same, the same view. Under salaries, almost 8 million, 7.849208. So a large portion in salaries. Benefits, almost another 3 million, 2.876 million. And then purchase services, and that includes lots of things, like our nurses and our SROs and other standard contracts that we have, power, utility, those kinds of things. Supplies and materials, a little bit of capital in that budget, and then the big charter school transfer under the object codes. And then Leanna has a couple more views, a couple other ways.
Yeah, a final look at the budget is by using PRC level or the program report code. And this designates activities of funding to accomplish a predetermined objective. This dimension of program report codes allows a school system to framework for classifying expenditures by program. As Dr. Nolte said in one of our conversations, this is the lingo in the school. A principal will call and say, "Do I have any money in my '72 fund?" So that's middle school remediation. So each one of those PRC codes, we use just to allocate different programs to see where that $17 million is being spent.
Any questions at all about current expense proposed budget? We'll certainly come back later if you have questions. At this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam, and he can talk about capital and child nutrition. Thank you, Leanna.
I'll be short and sweet. Commissioners, I know y'all have had a long day. I also would like to thank y'all for your leadership in these very hard times, and they are incredibly hard times. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you, Mr. Moorehead and Chris, Mr. Boyd, for the work on the conveyance of the Annex II property. That's greatly appreciated. For the capital budget, I have detailed out each of those in this spreadsheet here. You can see that at Bethel Elementary, we'll be replacing parking lot lights. We're changing those over to LED, which is a cost savings, but it's at a cost of $15,000. Bethel Elementary cafeteria stairs and library lights, we're going to replace broken lights there at a cost of $2,200. Bethel Middle and Waynesville Middle, their dining room AC is at end of life. Canton Middle, the cafeteria water heater, that failed boiler inspection. Clyde Elementary, we're putting in an access road there. We've had several emergency vehicles respond to Clyde because of the intensive intervention wing. Those students have some really intense needs and sometimes require ambulance service. So we're putting in an access road for them to be able to access that particular wing. At Jonathan Valley, you can see that we had yet another water heater fail boiler inspection. Maintenance equipment, you can see a variety of items there. Most of these will improve our efficiency and are needed replacements at a cost of $59.6. At Meadowbrook, we've got some water issues, and we realize we've had an absorbent amount of rain, but these issues exist whether we're in heavy rain totals or not. So we're going to repair a creek there at a cost of $5,000. Meadowbrook, the chiller is at end of life at a cost of $125,000. At Pisgah High, the softball field lights, if you'll remember, the town of Canton actually conveyed that property to us so that we could, we're one of the last softball fields that does not have lights on it. So the arrangement there was we would like to light the field, but we couldn't do that on property that was not ours. So they had, the town of Canton has met their end of the bargain, and we're going to try to meet our end of the bargain and light that field. Pisgah High dining room AC is at the end of life. Pisgah High School gym dryer is at, it needs replacing, and I did put in there because I know if anyone's keeping score, between Pisgah and Tuscola, we replaced Tuscola's one of the years previously. So Pisgah High parking lot patch, these are temporary fixes to, until we can repave. Tuscola High has parking lot patches that are needed, again, temporary till we can repave. Various schools have awnings and repairs. Various schools have playground gravel that needs replacement. Various schools, about every year, we have eight to 10 bard units in classrooms or throughout the building that we need to replace, so we're purchasing some to have on hand. At Waynesville Middle, the D-building roof is leaking, so we're going to replace that. Also, at Waynesville Middle, C-building chiller is at end of life. Waynesville Middle also A-building gym heat. As we do that, we're going to be able to replace an oil-fired boiler with natural gas, and it'll pay for itself in two years. That unit burns about 2.75 gallons per hour and runs pretty much all, all the time for six months of the year. And all of you know the cost of fuel, so it gets quite expensive. And then also at Waynesville Middle, we are adding hot water. The academy failed their inspection. The academy's where we serve students who struggle to perform in a regular classroom. We provide intensive surfaces there, and that comes with inspection, and hot water is needed to be able to pass that inspection. And then Waynesville Middle parking lot patching. Total proposed capital expenditures in the amount of $900,000. From 2019, 10, 2009, 10 to 2014, 15, many capital items and critical replacements were suspended due to budget shortages, again, to no one's fault. It just, that's the way it was. This created a windfall of items that must be replaced near to the same time. These items are partially reflected in the chart above and include, but are not limited to paving, HVAC, and awnings. In an effort to correct these issues, we are, again, requesting a total capital budget of $900,000 to dissolve capital that can no longer be repaired or is no longer fiscally responsible to maintain. Please note, this amount does not fully fund replacement costs, nor does it account for the multitude of projects that naturally occur in a normal operating year. It does account for incremental progress toward replacement of critical capital. Any questions on the capital budget? I either did a really good job or put you to sleep.
Do you have, is there another list, or do you have a complete list of all the capital projects? I know these are ones you're putting in this year's budget, but do you have a list of ongoing, future years to come as to what you want to repair and have fixed and replaced?
HVAC throughout the school system is going to continue to be, need to be replaced. So we've identified the schools that are nearest or are in absolute need of replacement. And so those are identified here, but ongoing, the remainder of the school system will need HVAC replacement ongoing. Most of the roofs have been worked through. Mr. Hargrove, when he was our maintenance director, did a lot of roof replacements. Waynesville Middle, however, was not one of those, or D-building was not one of those. So we're just working through the laundry list as we go. But HVAC, paving, and awnings, those are the big three that we see most prevalent. And then boilers. But you can see we're working through those boilers this year. Also, just a little historical context, when we first installed HVAC, which has been a while back now, they were done, that was done so with a grant, a one-time grant, and they were all put in at the same time. And, you know, was a good thing. It was money available that would allow for heating and cooling in the classrooms. The problem with that is it means replacement all at the same time. And so what we're really trying to do is space this out to where, when I stand up here next year or in subsequent years, it's going to be more HVAC, not all of it, but more. It's going to be more boilers, but not all boilers. And so over time, we have this idea of a replacement cycle that's incremental so that anyone who might step into my role in subsequent years is not facing, hey, it's all failing at the same time. That's kind of the goal. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, as long as you're looking, before, we used to have this list, and I'd say, okay, well, you know, names from top to bottom of the things that are most important to least important of things that you want to fix. And I mean, also noted, and I guess I'd heard that, that the fields need to be replaced, but yet we put that off for another year, the turf on the fields. If that's going to come out of the...
Lottery funds. Just as I believe Commissioner Long was talking about, forefathers had set aside money for the landfill. Someone before me did a good job of setting aside for the turf replacement. The decision to suspend that in that immediate moment, it was set to begin in May, we were put in a real spot with the governor's suspension of school. The fact that it was only temporarily suspended, the facilities were only temporary closed, meant that the possibility existed that they could reopen. And we did not want to begin construction or replacement of those fields, have school reconvene, and have a group of high school senior soccer players saying, "Why did you do that right now? We could have picked up our season." And it would have put us in a really bad spot, one that we did not want. I always like to just have a good answer to the question, "Why did you do that?" And I did not have a good answer to that. So then we looked at, okay, well, we'll push it forward to June. And if we push it forward to June, then we have returning seniors for fall sports saying, "Why are you doing it now? You have our field tour up." So the only safe place to move it to was December. And so through a little investigating and looking at the fields, we found that they could play safely for one more year. We want to do a final inspection to make sure that's accurate. But by delaying the project, it left the fields available for play in the spring and in the fall, which, you know, once we finally do get kids back, we don't want to say, "Sorry, drive to Western to play over there," or, "Hey, how about playing at Inca for all your home games?" We just, once we get them back, we want it to seem as normal as possible for them and have the full spectrum of facilities available to them. Right. We, Dr. Nolte's pointing out that we do have other projects that are sometimes funded through lottery. We haven't committed any funds from that, simply because we need to get the turf replacement underway and then see what the remaining balance is. Any other questions? All right, there being none, I'll move on to child nutrition. Want to take a moment to brag on our folks, our school, school nutrition workers, our bus drivers, our teacher assistants, who have went above and beyond the call of duty, I guess you would say, to serve over 300,000 meals to children ages one through 18 through some really difficult times. Very proud of their work and I just wanted to publicly say that. Looking at the school nutrition fund, I just want to remind you, this is not money that's allocated by the county or the state. This is, the child nutrition program operates independently of other programs. Revenues include cash for meals and supplemental cell items sold, USDA cash reimbursements and USDA donated commodities. Our budget for the 2021 school year shows a decrease of seven million, or $7,501. The proposed budget projects the following. The expenses to be $4,189,514 with revenues being $4,189,514. Labor and benefits of this will be 58% comprised. Food will be 38% and overheads 4%. And that's where you have to replace fume hood or serving line, what have you. USDA reimbursement rates have included only a cost of living increase in the past several years. The 2021 budget assumes that there will be no federal budget cuts in the upcoming year. Current reimbursement rates are as follows. For breakfast, for a paying student, we get a 31 cent reimbursement. For reduced price, we get a $1.90 reimbursement and for free, we get $2.20. For lunch, for the paying student, we get 41 cent reimbursement. Reduced price, $2.10 and for free, we get $3.50. And then for snacks, for the paying student, we get 8 cents. For the reduced price student, we get 47 cents and for free, we get 94 cents. The USDA commodity rate is .2375 for lunch. These funds are used to purchase commodity foods and farm to school produce. The average year-to-date plate cost is at 228.20. To produce breakfast was $1.86 and lunch was $3.72. The 2021 budget does not include an increase in meal prices. Current meal prices, breakfast pre-K through 12 are, is a $1.25. Lunch pre-K through five is 255 and six through 12 is $2.80 and nine through 12, the mega meals are $3.50. We have four schools participating in the community eligibility provision. No-cost meals to all students at Central Haywood High School, Clyde Elementary School, Hazelwood Elementary School and North Canton Elementary School. North Canton Elementary School and Clyde Elementary School are up for possible recertification this year. Data will be pulled on April 1st to determine if they can remain on the program and if any other schools are eligible to join the program for the 2021 school year. Any questions in regards to child nutrition?
You know how many people, how many kids we have on free lunch now?
It ranges, at, at the high schools, it's somewhere between 49 and 51% in free and reduced lunch. At the elementary.
Of the total student population?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And it, it fluctuates between 49 and 51. It has one as high as 54, 55%.
That, that includes the reduced as well? You said the reduced and the free? Okay.
And at the elementary schools, and it depends on which community it's in, we have, like the North Canton Elementary is probably our highest free and reduced student population. And it, it's been as high as 80% and it's been as low as 67%. So there's a fluctuation there. There's a lot of factors that influence that, number one. Whether the family or the home decides to take advantage of that opportunity and fill out the paperwork and send that back into us. The other thing is changes in economic factors within a community. People moving in or out of a community, so it, it goes up and down. So it's by school, it's broken down. But all, all the elementary schools are 50% or higher with the exception of Riverbend. And then there's the breakdown item for item of what the child nutrition budget looks like, unless you want me to go through it, I'll let you just.
No, I've got, I've got a question on what you were just talking about. I know you collect a certain amount of money from USDA for those. With the money that's collected from people who have to pay for their lunches, how much in a year's time do you think the student body contributes in order to be able to eat lunch and breakfast at school?
All right.
How much would you collect? If you were collecting half or full price, how much do you think you collect to feed them? Any idea?
I don't know that number. Allison Francis, I'm sure our child nutrition director would have a pretty good guess at that, but I'd be afraid to make one, afraid of being accurate.
Just sometime, if you could, if you think about it, that would be something I'd be interested in knowing, how much people are paying or contributing in order for everybody to be able to eat.
Could certainly do that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Pliss, we'll, we'll get that for you. The only thing that I can say maybe to bring it into perspective, through the years, you have heard presentations from Allison or someone, and those presentations said something like this, we were required to go up on our student meal cost by a dime. They made us go up because the cost of, of creating the meal and what we were charging were not close enough. So I think we're, we're pretty close. We've not gone up in two years, which means the, what students are paying plus the reimbursement from the state and federal side is probably the total cost. But we'll try to get Allison to get you an answer to that question. It's a good question. Any general questions? We appreciate your, the opportunity to come and present our local budgets to the commission. We'll be glad to entertain any questions if you have any.
How has this school shutdown affected your budgeting process? Have you had to see, you know, shifting money around, making any major adjustments? How long, I guess you're like the rest of us, you really don't know how much longer. I mean, looking to the fall, obviously this is going to encompass that, but.
We're still paying everyone that we can pay. So in terms of the big portion of the state, federal and local budgets, the governor asked us to pay people if we had legitimate work for them to do. And most of our people are being paid. We're not paying substitute teachers, so that's some money that we're not spending. But all in all, other than a tutor here or there, we're still spending the, the budgets that we have in place. I think you have asked the million dollar question, which is what's it going to be like in August or September and October? And you know, my heart says we're going to roll in here in the middle of August and go wide open, but my mind says maybe not. We have had in the, the legislative budget that was passed earlier this morning, I understand. We read the 70-page senate proposal middle of last week. We have had some remote learning days added to the calendar, which makes me believe that we're, they're, they're thinking that we'll, we'll have some more of the same sometime in the fall.
Who ultimately makes that decision?
Well, the state school calendar belongs to the state legislature and then sometimes the state legislature will allow the Department of Public Instruction through the state school board to write rules and regulations. But we anticipate that we're, we will have a funny year next year. No one really knows that. I think if we knew that, we could all make a lot of money by telling people exactly what they need to do at, at the beginning of May for what's going to happen in August and September. We, we don't really know. But the calendar part is really decided by the state legislature and we have no idea what they will do on their budget side. That's the bulk of our budget and you know, we're.
I've noticed some universities in the last few days kind of putting out there that they're probably going to start up. There's data out there, you know, now to indicate that, as we talked earlier, that basically your school age kids, they just don't get it. And a lot of them now are saying they don't transfer it. So I, I guess that's left up to some other people to decide all that. But you know, things are changing surrounding the data and who's getting it and who's not.
Yeah. I, it, it's hard to say on the COVID-19 thing. I, I will say on remote learning, I, we have tried to pretty, pretty much go on record and say it's, it's not the same. It is not the same. It does work well with some high school students who are familiar with taking online courses through Haywood Community College or through the virtual public high school, but it's not a great option. And the younger the child, I think the more difficult it is to do remote learning from attention span to everything else. So the state has built in five remote learning days. They did not increase our total number of hours or days. They added them on top and, and ask us to use our workdays to do those. That'll be interesting since most workdays teachers can, can use accumulated leave. So what do you do? I guess have them, my biggest fear, and you shouldn't have asked me because it's late in the day, but my biggest fear is I'm, I'm up at 3:15 in the morning and I'm talking to the superintendents west of us and it's going to hit the Bossum Ridge about 5:30 or 6:00 and we need to start running the buses a little bit before that. And we're trying to make a snow call and then, oh! It'll have to be a remote learning day too. So we, we have some things to figure out based upon what we hear was passed in the state legislature. So it's hard to know.
Yeah, and it's hard to, it's hard to set budgets as far as revenue streams coming in, going out. It's, everybody's in the same shape, I'm sure.
Right. I think we're all in the same boat, all across the country. And unfortunately with, not just with our budget, but with about with everyone else is if it's a significant cut, when you look at everyone's budget, most of it's salary and benefits. And that's the last thing you want to cut, but if it's the biggest part, it usually does have some impact there. We'll just have to hope for the best and hope the economy can open up and we can live on reserves that we have. And if not, then we'll be in a situation which unfortunately we've been in before. Some of us in this room, when we had the economic crisis and locally we cut, I don't know, 2.4 and closed the school. We do not want to go back there, but we may not be in charge of whether or not we go back. You know, we'll just have to put our heads together, be as smart as we can, do the best that we can. Hope for the best, prepare for the worst, I guess. Any other questions? Again, I thank you for your time. I know you've had a long day. Yes, sir.
Is there anything that you've seen so far, if in the event school doesn't begin in September? Everyone predicts that we're going to get better and then we're going to start socializing again and then we're going to get bad again. And this may happen in the fall. Is there anything that you see deficit wise that we need to know about heading into that? So this was kind of catching off guard suddenly, but if we don't prepare for it this fall, it's not really anybody's fault but our own?
Yeah, I probably shouldn't say this out loud. I don't know that, I don't know that, that, and again, I may pay for this and I know we're being live streamed here, but I don't know that we need a ton of additional funds. If we can hold our budgets as close as we can, that may not be possible. I'm, I'm a realist, but if we can hold our budgets, then we're in pretty good shape as long as the state continues to give us the, the authority to transfer within some of the state lines and, and you all have given us that ability locally by funding a formula rather than individual line items. I think costs go up in school food service and transportation if you're doing some of the things we're doing now, particularly in school food service, but I think we're okay there because they do get those little reimbursement pieces you saw earlier. And if we can just hold the line on everything else, and Trevor may have something that he's thought of off the top of his head, but I can't think of additional things. And then, you know, if you're in a situation where you have to cut, I think the worst thing in the world is to say four months in, in advance, you're going to go, well, we'll cut and whatever you put in that line is the wrong, it's the wrong thing, you know? And we have fought very hard even with our last big cuts, not, not to cut art and music and AIG and some of those really important things. So Trevor, Dr. Putnam, did you think of any special budget stuff?
Well, we, we've had additional expenses. Right now, we're being told the state will reimburse for those, such as to be able to do the meal distribution. We've had to purchase a ton of coolers and that's a cost we wouldn't ordinarily have. We've had to purchase Germex, some type of hand sanitizer because the state required, we have that placed on the bus for the food distribution, which is not something we would ordinarily. There are additional cleaning measures, which requires additional cleaning supplies and solutions that are specific for COVID. So we've incurred some additional costs right now. We're being told that we'll be reimbursed for those and so we just have to trust that we in fact will. Should that not come to fruition, then that, that's an additional operating cost that we'll have to absorb or, or be prepared for.
Tell them about those Ghostbuster guns.
Oh, he likes to call them the Ghostbuster guns. We purchased some Victory is the brand, they're electrostatic sprayers. I'm trying to remember the cost because I know you're going to ask me that the minute I'm done and I cannot remember. I want to say they're about $800 a gun. And you basically take two chlorine tablets and drop into the tank of this gun. And if you've ever seen how a, a car is painted in a factory, a brand new car is painted in a factory, they, they positively or negatively charge the car and positively or negatively charge the paint particle and the two attract, that's how the paint adheres to the metal. This operates on the same principle. So any neutrally charged object, like if you were to take it and spray it in this room, it'll mist and that mist will go and attract to all edges or faces of an object. And so that's how we've been disinfecting buses during this time. It's, it's a very efficient way to sanitize or clean a bus.
I had a guy show me that at my shop last Friday and he said they were around 800 bucks and he showed a demonstration there. It does, you can spray it in the air and it, it'll adhere to underneath like a toilet or anything. I mean, it was amazing how it worked, but he showed me a demonstration, so I got to see it firsthand.
Right. And it, it's a pretty nifty machine. We had some of those on hand, but when you go to where you need that kind of capacity at every school, we had to purchase additional ones. Luckily, we had found a deal on them ahead of this. It was buy three, get one free. So we had purchased a good, as many as we could ahead of this. And then when this hit, then we had to have one for every school, so we had to buy more.
Is that something we have for our ambulances or need?
We actually talked about this on Friday, about one for the detention center. So Chris is evaluating those and the different types of chemicals that they use. So we're, we're looking into them.
One other question, computer. I know some students don't have them and are being provided. Do you have enough of those or is that something you foresee if this were to continue, you're going to have issues with supply and demand?
I, I think we'll be able to get the supply to meet the demand. It will just be a matter of funding. And right now, we've had a lot of generous folk. And right now, we've had a lot of generous folks. The Pisgah Foundation has come through and purchased some hotspots for us. The Haywood County Schools Foundation has purchased some hotspots. So we've got a lot of generous folks helping us right now. If this were to go to where moms and dads begin, you know, not to be able to pay the Wi-Fi bill or what have you, I could see that escalating pretty rapidly. So as it currently stands through donations, we're able to provide hotspots for those folks that need it.
Well, if it looks like, and Yuns are the ones having to deal with it on the front lines, if it looks like you're going to run across some areas, then we probably need to know about it pretty fast so we can hopefully figure out anything. I'm sure Brian don't want to hear it because it's going to mess up his budget. We need something that we can kind of prepare for just in case it does go sideways.
Right. And, you know, looking at devices in particular, Dr. Nolte hit on that in the current expense budget. So basically, we've accounted for a 20% replacement every year. So by the time you get to five years, you've fully turned over 100% of your devices. Well, that was with the expectation that the devices would naturally age out. And so if we were to incur a lot of loss there as a result of COVID, lost devices, nonusable devices, then, you know, that's going to escalate as well. So that again is another reasonable budget assumption. You can imagine it's going to increase. So, yeah, there are lots of those things. How much? It's hard to know. We're just, right now, we are hoping and trusting that our students will be good caregivers to our devices and that they'll return in one piece. And maybe if they're watching the livestream, they'll hear that and feel compelled. Please.
Does anybody got any other questions?
I just had the question about monitoring supply and demand with teachers. And it may be for either one of you all. I know that the supply of teachers coming out of colleges is not what it used to be, that that's going to be an issue. I know that you've had classes where you've not had teachers in classes. What's this coming year looking like as far as the ability to obtain certified teachers to teach the classes?
Well, unfortunately, the situation has not changed. The university system in the state has not for a while and still does not produce the number of teachers that we need in the state. They did pass, state school board did pass some flexibility for us to hire people who are degreed to teach some classes. And what you get with those folks, it's called a residency program now, it was called lateral entry. And it's really a shot in the dark when you get those folks. You typically get one of two things. Someone who is just, they're just good. They're just really good. They're smart. They're good with people and they can do it. Or you get folks who have the right degree and they're just not designed to put in front of a group of students, you know? They're like me in front of a group of kindergartners. It's just, you know, probably not the best thing for me to do, be teaching those. Our increased local supplement does help. I think we can recruit better than districts to our west. I do think our environment helps. I think once you get off the mountain east of us, we're still very, very attractive. We still send people to recruitment fairs and send out information. So we're working on it as hard as we can. And we typically start earlier than most school districts advertising positions. The first thing that we do is when we do our tentative teacher allotment, which Joe Barker now does, I did that for many years and Dr. Garrett did that before me. You'll have situations where this elementary school needs to lose one because their enrollment's down a little bit, but they don't have any retirements or resignations. And then these two schools over here can maybe hire one, but we have to place the one, extra one. So once we get through that, typically in May, then we start advertising as early as we can on positions. So I guess the answer is the situation has not changed in terms of the number coming out of the university system, but we're starting early. Typically, we run into trouble when Buncombe or Asheville or Henderson, all good school systems like ours, they have a little more supplement money and they'll tend to hire a little later than us, knowing that they might get that teacher with five years left, you know, just to get their retirement cost up. We're working on it. It's not a problem. I don't think that will change.
Are there any incentives for people going into college now that, you know, used to? I mean, I know several people when I graduated, of course, that's been a long time ago, that they would, you know, they would pay for the school, for them to go to school if they would promise to teach for, what, four or five years once they got out? But I don't think there's anything like that that they have.
There was a teacher, there was a teacher fellows program, is probably what you're remembering. And that was eliminated from the state legislature and they've made some moves to restore some of that. As part of their efforts in the state to recruit more teachers. So it went away for a while, but I think that's one of the things, one of the things our state legislature has done is realize that, you know, you have to have people in the steering wheel in the classroom. So they're reinstating some of those opportunities.
But are you saying, but it is a concern that you have about that very thing?
It's a concern I have. I meet every Thursday morning electronically with the, we started doing this with the COVID thing hit in March. Meet every Thursday morning electronically with all the superintendents in the west. Eighteen, sometimes nineteen of us. We have a couple from region seven that join us sometimes. And it's a concern for all of us. And we're in the middle. We're really in the middle. We can attract financially more than the folks west of us and north of us. And then east of us, they just have the bigger, the bigger, big city or medium-sized city income and they can attract a little bit more. So it's something we talk about all the time.
I would like, if you could, between you and Bryant, come up with something that we could send to the governor in support of these programs.
Resolution or something?
Yeah, just something that says, you know, we feel like this is a growing concern. It has been a growing concern. We're not going to have qualified teachers to teach in our public schools. I mean, all you have to do is just look and see who's going to school and who's going to be a teacher and the number of teaching positions we're going to have. And you're just not going to have enough people to fill it. And so I think we need to send it to our legislators and our governor. I mean, they really need to be looking at this. I was on a committee several years ago and you could see it coming and it's hitting. So anything we can do to support that.
We'll be glad to do it. It's a good idea.
Dr. Nolte, you said that the retention was better. Is that correct?
Our retention is much better. I remember, Jason Hines could remember the number off the top of his head, but we lost some crazy number, like 52 one year. And I think on an average year, we lose about 25 or 30 teachers. And that number has been down surprisingly enough, Jason told me the number the other day, by this time of the year, people are talking to us and they're saying, I'm going to retire. I'm leaving. And our number's in the teens right now and we're in May. And we don't, we don't know what that is. That may be some phenomenology or some phenomenon, rather, related to COVID and they're, who knows, they're thinking, well, I really didn't want my last year to be like this, so I'm just not going to leave yet. But our number for this year is, right now, in May, is a lot lower than it normally is. And Jason came down the hall the other day and told me that number. You remember him telling you, it was something like 12. But the loss of teachers to neighboring districts is better than it was before we did the supplement increases.
I was just hoping that that was the reasoning possibly behind it, you know, that we were doing the right thing. So that's why I asked the question.
I think we are and we could not have done that without a healthy funding formula. And you all are to be credited for that.
I think it's a testament to the quality of our school system also and our community. I hear feedback from teachers that teach in other counties and they're here and they've been there and they come back and there is a vast difference in that aspect. People want to be here to a degree. I mean, they want to be here. Feedback I'm getting. So they're, we've got a good program. We've got a good system.
We appreciate our collaborative work with you all as a board of commissioners. That makes it a lot easier.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Anybody have any other questions? Appreciate y'all coming out today. Okay, next is our budget presentation for us. Bryant?
Still on time.
You got 50 minutes.
Forty-five, actually. Five minutes for me to get to my office at 3:30.
Luckily, it's not been a long day, so everybody's inspired and ready to see 36 more slides about budget. So I met individually with everybody in January and we had started departmental meetings and then sort of needed to do a 180 on where we were headed. You know, we talked about investing about $600,000 or $700,000 in our library, doing a classification study for employees, all sorts of things that somewhere around the middle of March, we said, let's go a different direction. I may have told several of you, the recession that started in 2007 and lasted 18 months, I thought, prepared me for anything as far as budget-wise. But this has really been much more difficult because you're facing a public health crisis and economic problems at the same time. And actually, the NCAACC is suggesting to some counties to pass interim budgets. I'm not necessarily convinced that's a good approach. I've had to live through interim budgets a couple of times and it is just a disaster. It's a never-ending process. So I think we've put together some estimates where we can adopt a budget. It's not pretty, but we can get through and budgets can always be amended and that's a direction we may have to go, but that's not in the plans right now. So I may refer to this as the recommended budget. That's just out of theies. Two weeks from today, I'll recommend the budget, but I don't know what to call this tentative budget, so I may slip up and call it recommended, but it's not. First, we'll kind of review what we're doing. That's talking about some workloads. I think several of us have fielded calls about things that have changed during COVID, how we're performing, the demands on the county operations. So we'll review that. Then we'll go into revenues, expenditures, talk about the next steps to adoption and then get some input from you on my marching orders for the next two weeks. So let's look back at our outcome, safe and secure community. And you'll notice the red bars, those are March. So, and we'll use middle of March as kind of when COVID hit here and we went into shelter in place. So think about the data that you're seeing, half of the month of March was just standard operating and then the middle of March changed quite a bit. So this is EMS calls per month. You can see 553 in March of 20 compared to 671 in March of 19. 553 calls in March of 20 was the lowest since last February, but it's still not incredibly low. You can see two months ago, calls were 585. So ambulances are still running. We're gathering data as far as performance to see how April's going to look. This is something that we plan on tracking and presenting more often than we have. Another one is the sheriff. This is civil process and court documents, 1641. You can see that is lower than the last few months, but it's still higher than three months ago. So court proceedings, even though courts are closed, the sheriff's office serving documents. Public health, this is the number of patients seen. 187 through March, a little lower than what you would expect, but not that much lower. You can see some spikes. Will and I put this together. What is that? Is that flu season or what, when people are going to the health department for more patients? And so you can see spikes several times a year. Immunizations, almost mimics the last sheet, that's vaccinations. So we're down 123 compared to February of 131, but still not a substantial drop-off in our services. This one is probably the one where you'd like to see a drop-off, the number of kids in foster care. That trend is growing. We'll talk about foster care in a little bit. And if you read some articles, they're saying there may be more demand on foster care after COVID because people are less likely to take strangers into their home, if you will. So that could fall to the county. This one is inspections. Bruce and his guys are still required to inspect homes or do inspections on different permits within 48 hours. The state sent out early on in COVID that they were not lifting that. So you can see, we actually did more in March than we did in February. So we'll monitor that, but his folks are still out and have that two-day turnaround. Land records. One of the good things about this, I guess, is it's changed our processes. Sherry has more people e-filing. She was sharing some revenue versus those who e-filed versus those who come in and it's flipped. We have quite a bit more in electronic payments and you can see 346 in March versus 334 the prior month. So there again, we haven't had a decrease in those operations. Real estate transactions, down a little bit from February, but still in line with January. The real estate may be slowing down just a little bit, but it's fairly modest decrease, I would say. These are tax collections by Greg and his folks. Shows you the last year. You can see last March, we were at 96%. We're at 96% this March, so we're still collecting taxes. IT help desk. Can't say enough good things about our IT staff. They were able to get probably 130, 150 folks out of the offices doing telework in really quick order. And you can see the number of calls for service is related to setting up people to be able to telework. So we were able to vacate people out of our buildings, working from home. Any questions on any of this so far? So libraries, that's one of the things we wanted to show. We sent out an email a couple of weeks ago asking for some measures to show what we're doing. I think we have 400, Will said. So I didn't, I have all 400 if you'd like to see them.
You mean Will came up with that?
With a little urging, he came up with it. But you can see, library visits are about half in March. We closed the libraries to the public and you all know, we repurposed the librarians. They've worked the help desk for David. So they have been instrumental in setting up the hotline and being able to get good information out to the public. So we found a different, you know, role for them and they've handled it really well. Between them and the school nurses, we have great success with the hotline. You have something? Commissioner Long?
No. Not right now. I'm going to wait until you get finished.
Okay. That's it for kind of the workloads. So if we want to talk about those or review any, I'll be glad to review those. If not, we'll head on into the revenues.
Well, obviously, I mean, we're going on March numbers. I mean, we're in May.
Yeah.
What's, any idea what April looks like?
Well, since Friday was just May 1st. Well, since Friday was just May 1st.
All right.
We'll start collecting that data, and we'll see where the drop-off is.
I mean, that's where the true story is going to be, really.
It will be.
Because we didn't really put this stuff in effect until last week of March.
Right. So we'll see what April holds, but I do know, you know, anecdotal evidence is not evidence, really, but the social workers haven't quit going to homes and doing CPS and APS calls. Those kinds of things still go on, and so we have had a decrease in EMS calls, and I think nationwide, it was reported about 24%. And so I have some bad news related to that to show you. So projected revenues, you can see the green line was where we were at as far as projection back in January, February. We had hoped to be at about $85 million in general fund revenues, but once COVID became clear and hurting the economy, we've revised our revenue estimate to about $81.2 million, not an insignificant amount. Real and personal property, this is the line share of our revenue. We have a slight increase from current year was budgeted at $40.8 million. We have $40.9 million. One of the things we did was to look, we had natural growth in our tax base, but have lowered the collection rate back to that of 2009. That was the lowest point during the recession, and so we have 96.35% tax collection. That's a conservative number, but I think also, if we can look back and see how bad it was, this recession is not supposed to be as bad, and I think we'd be able to hit our revenue goal. The worst thing to do is to budget revenue that you miss, and then you have to take action mid-year. And so if you plan for the worst, you can just be pleasantly surprised. Motor vehicle tax, there was, it's hard to compare it to the recession because at that time, we were responsible for collecting motor vehicle taxes. The state took that over, and so we have a slight increase based on our evaluations. I'm a little hesitant because reports I've heard, March, they had a 9% drop in people, in tag renewals, and they said April could be 18%. So I'm watching this revenue for the next two weeks to see if there's any better information out there. We may have a drop, but since it's not collected by us, and we don't have that much experience, it's hard to tell. But I talked to the sheriff. Have we noticed a larger number of people riding around on dead tags? He hasn't seen it, but that was some reports out of Raleigh, so it's worth monitoring. Okay, this one's going to take just a little bit longer to go through, and this is the major impact, or major revenue that's impacted, is sales tax. So this is what last year's sales tax graph looks like by month. You can see the trend. You get the peak of $1.4 million there in December, and then it drops off in January and February, and back up, and I guess that's June at $1.5 million. This is the natural trend. That's what we'd expect to see, okay? So I'm going to layer in next, this year's revenue, okay? So the green line represents current year revenue. Now, sales tax lags 90 days behind, so this is a double projection that, I should say, actual results may vary because this is a slippery one. As you can see, every month over this fiscal year, we've beat last year's number by, on average, 10%. So you can see the green line above the black line, but it's following the same trend. So we feel confident there. Okay, so that green line here stops in November because we haven't received December, January, and February yet. Even though it's May, this is how sales tax lags and is tough. So what I have done between the first and second line is projected sales tax at about 7.5% over the current line. Now, for the first four months, we were over 10%, but like I said earlier, I won't miss it on the right side. So sales tax is growing 7.5% until we get February's collections in. Now, the real drop-off, as you can see how the green line goes below the black, is they said in March, retail sales were down 8.9%, but that was only for half the month, right? So double that, and you'd say, okay, April should be down 20. But because we rely more on tourism than other parts of the state, I have decreased the revenue projection by 25%. So the green line in between the two lines is 7.5% when we actually were 10% over, but, and I've dropped it 25% instead of 20. Like I said, super cautious about this revenue because it is hard to calculate, and who knows? I reached out to a friend of mine in Durham, great budget director, and he sent back an email how he was going about it, kind of was in line with my projections, and then he said, but in short, who knows? So that's kind of where we are. Who knows? But I feel like this is a good depiction of where it should be. So next year, on the next year, you can see the red line actually represents us trying to project next year's sales tax. We've dropped the projection down 10% per month, so you can see it basically on top of the black line from FY '19, and then it mimics the green line because it's 10% below for the rest of the year. What's interesting is, by the time you get to June, we're down $500,000 a month in sales Maybe my estimate is too conservative, but from what we're reading, if you look what the Federal Reserve folks are saying, the recession is likely to be with us through the end of next summer or to June, and so projecting a 10% drop in sales tax is not unreasonable, I don't think. Questions on any of that sales tax? I know there's a lot of moving parts, but that's kind of the theory behind.
You're saying, how much per month, we're under $500,000?
Well, by June, by June, it would be that. It varies along that path, but the high watermark would be that we're off about $500,000. Okay. Other taxes, we have a slight increase there, and all of these will be revisited between the next two weeks. It's an increase of $118,000. TDA taxes are in there, as well as, I think, a registered deeds tax. The pilt money and the beer and wine tax, a $2,000 increase, that one, still revisit those. Restricted intergovernmental, we have an increase of about $730,000 that's associated with Health and Human Services. You can see that dropped from back in '18. That was when we received the hospital money. That's why it was so high. Any questions so far on revenues? Permits and fees, have a drop there from 448.5 to 424. Most of those are associated with building permits. Just unsure where that's going, so we dropped those off, and we'll look at those again the next couple of weeks. Sales and service, $4.8 million from $5.8. The largest in this is EMS revenue. We were talking about, that was only through March. What's April going to look like? Well, when we start seeing that trips nationwide are down 20%, we've decreased revenue to reflect that. We have a really good collection rate, and our folks are good. We use a great vendor, EMS MNC, and we have worked with them to try to get revenue projections, and we'll have them update at least one more time before we present on the 18th. Investment earnings, a slight increase of $10,000. This year was probably a little artificially low. We know the interest rates that we were receiving last year were greater than what we'll get next year, but if you can see '19, we had $1.1 million. So we raised it a little bit, but it's because it was probably a little conservative for this year. But really, $10,000 out of $800,000 is not a whole lot of increase. Miscellaneous revenue, going from $397,000 to $145,000. This is where we actually had revenue associated with the Friends of the Shelter. They gave us $200,000 last year, or current year, for our debt service. I'm not sure those funds will be available. We'll reach out to them and see if they plan to make a donation this year, or this may be a rebuilding year where they're doing some fundraising. But anyway, we currently don't have that in the budget. That's kind of a summary of the revenues. You want to talk about any of those in particular? I've had enough numbers today. All right, so let's go over to the classification expenditures. You can see here, salaries and benefits are going from $40.7 to $41 million, a slight increase of $400,000. The biggest increase is in operating from 37.8 to 39.3. We have a drop in capital and capital outlay. We've cut some of that. That number's going to change. I mentioned to you in an email, we've got to evaluate which vehicles we're replacing, so that number will probably go up. My experience, if you cut vehicles one year, you're just adding the pain the next year, and the time the vehicles are down and the garage gets backed up, and, you know, those ambulances and sheriff's vehicles have to run. So we're going to look at which vehicles we're replacing. Debt's showing a decrease of about $300,000. That number's going to change because we have to work with the hospital, or the Health Foundation, to put debt payments in for that new nurses' building out at Haywood Community College. We haven't finished that. That number's probably going to be $300,000 or $400,000 more. And then the last one is transfers to other funds. It's about the same, from $967 to a little over $1 million. Questions there about classification? Operating, my number in this presentation's slightly off from the number that Dr. Nolte presented. It's off $20,000 or so. I was working on one set of numbers. He sent something over Friday, so I've got to actually use his number, but that was just because of Tommy. He hadn't sent over his official request, and I was using an ADM, or number of student number, that wasn't accurate. College operating, Dr. White showed you $87,000. We have revow that's coming up, right? We're working on it, and we have about another $96.5 increase that we need to fund that project. We have a huge number in IT, and it's sprinkled through IT and over at Health and Human Services. It all goes back to some outdated equipment we have at Brown Avenue, and our server capacity is not where it needs to be. That number's going to be extremely expensive. Right now, it looks like it's 426. I have Lori working with a vendor to try to get that number down. It's kind of a kick in the gut, but we have performance issues with our computers, and the system over at Brown Avenue was purchased in 2015, so it's coming on at the end of its useful life. And the last one is state foster care. I showed you that number of kids in foster care is increasing. This is an increase of $831,000. That number's really not ours. The state provides IRA with a template. You punch in the number of kids, and it gives you your commitment, and that is what the number looked like in January. I asked IRA, hey, can you revisit that number with updated data? And it went the wrong way. It went from 831 to, and added another $300,000. I said, well, let's just go with that first number. I like that number better. Either way, a penny's right at $750,000. This is more than a penny on our foster care charges. This is a tough one, but it's.
Is that what we come up with, or does the state reimburse us for that?
Part of that money, I showed in restricted intergovernmental, that was, I think, $770,000. Part of that is related to foster care, but there's some county funds in there as well. This is an overview of function. You can see, general government is up 7.3 to 7.6. Central services, 5.1 to 5.3. Public safety, an increase of 20.2 to 20.4. I won't read those to you. The one that sticks out is mass transit. It's an increase of $4. I think I have more than $4 spending on that slide. The big difference there is the 19.8 to the 21.3 for social services or Health and Human Services. You can see that a lot of that was foster care. And remember, current year, we did that market adjustment, and we gave 5% to our employees that make under 40. So in a lot of these areas, that's driving the cost, that we did it for half a year, we rolled it out in January, so now we get a full year of that market adjustment, and it was the right call to make. We've been able to cut down on turnover, things like that, but we do have to pay for the full year of it. And social services and Health Department were the recipients of the biggest bulk of those. Education, slight increase, or actually a decrease, because the college is cutting their capital request. On the operating side, it's up. The last one shows 8.5 to 7.0. So we budget merit, COLA, and the Christmas bonus money centrally, and then we spread it to the departments after the budget's adopted. That way, we can make adjustments much easier on the fly if things change. So this year's a good example. If we would have had it throughout our departments, we'd have had to make 100 different changes. So you can see the drop, and the reason behind it is that we aren't going to fund those things. We're going to suspend it this year, just because we can't afford it. Here's some requests that we received. You can see, five positions at Health and Human Services, eight for telecommunications, and one for a community paramedic. Total of about $856,000 in new positions that are not in this budget. It's just tough. And, you know, positions like the community paramedic, there's some cost sharing with the hospital, but we still bear the cost of a vehicle and things like that. So this year was just not the year, I think, to fund those. The eight telecommunications, those were critical in cutting down the number of times the phone rings before somebody answers. That was something that we were hoping to fund. And then the positions at Health and Human Services, a lot of those aren't even 100% county funds. Some of them are 25% county funds, 75% outside funds, but none of those are in the budget. It would be about $856,000 to add those. Any other questions right now? So I mentioned it, no merit, no COLA, and the Christmas bonuses for '21 have been cut. Classification study was postponed indefinitely. We do continue to fund longevity, and the 401K will remain at 3%. And the good news is, we don't have any change in health insurance. None for the county, and more importantly, none for the employee. It is currently trending in a pretty strong position. If you look, the blue line is last year's medical claims. The red line is actually this year's, and you can see about where the drop-off happens is our switch from Crescent to Aetna. So we were going from $713,000 last year in January to $408,000 in January this year. Last year in February was 713, this year was 557. So that trend's promising, and you can see, the dotted black line is a rolling average where the trend's going. So hopefully, that continues. We'll update this information more. Our costs are contained, and I feel good about that.
We're used to graphs going like that.
I'm sorry?
We're used to graphs going like that.
So the bad news, currently, if this was the budget as recommended, I'd need about $7 million in fund balance to balance. Comparatively, we used $3.6 million in fund balance this year. Most of all of that can be in two places, sales tax and the loss of EMS revenues. The expenditure side is less than 1%. It's like $800,000, maybe a little more when we add the debt and some vehicles, but ultimately, it's a pretty tight budget. The loss of revenue is what is just really tough. So what's next? The rest of this week and next week, I'd like to meet with you, talk about details of the budget. We can do a deep dive. I plan on presenting on the 18th. We have a public hearing. We have a public hearing tentatively scheduled for the twenty sixth. That's a Tuesday after Memorial Day. June first, you can consider budget adoption, and then the fifteenth is a fallback date. That's it? I'd love direction from you guys.
So to balance the budget, you would have to do seven million out of fund balance?
Yes, sir.
So do we need to look at cuts?
You know, we can always look at cuts. If I felt like this is the two thousand seven recession again, I'd be more worried. I think that the economy can bounce back much quicker. It scares me to say, let's roll the dice and take it all out of fund balance. But again, the services we provide, somebody relies on them, and there's not a whole lot of discretion. When you see that foster care's going up eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's not really even discretionary. What would we cut to make up for that? You know, we're sort of painted into a corner by some of the costs. We have, for most parts, the operating is flat. And I didn't mention, the state changed. You saw it in Dr. White and Dr. Nolte's presentation. The state changed the employer contribution for the retirement center system. That costs us about three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars for next year. So a lot of the costs are not that... They weren't caused here in Haywood County. There are other... Somebody else giving them to us. We can certainly look at cuts, and I have asked the departments for a list of cuts, and we've already taken many of them. I think from the requested down to what's in the system now is about four million, four and a half million less. So we've already taken an axe to it, so now we can break out a scalpel and go after some programs.
You know what? What's amazing is really how fast this thing came on us. You know, at the last work session, we were talking about what a great fund balance we had, and, you know, then the wheels fell off. I think I made the comment, you know, it's a rainy day fund, and it's going to rain again. Well, I'm sorry that that happened, but we were fortunate in the fact that we did have a healthy fund balance. So possibly, maybe we could ride, you know, ride through this a lot better.
Yeah, you nailed it, Jim, because we didn't know, you know, what position this would put us in, and we do have a healthy fund balance, but we also have to be wary of it to start using it for recurring costs, right? We talked in January, let's put the fund balance to work, one-time money for one-time costs. But also, there's a reason that you have a savings account, is to keep the ship going. And there's a lot of people that rely on our services, and putting it to work this year is not a bad idea.
That's what it's for. You know, we say a rainy day fun, and unfortunately, it's raining right now. So it looks like you've already done quite a bit of cutting, if you've cut that much out of it already. So maybe we could hope for the best and use that fund balance for the seven million.
Is there any...
I think that hopefully, you will get out of this quicker, as you mentioned, than when the recession hits. So hopefully, that's the case.
Is there any litmus test as to where we might land as far as our percentage in that healthy range? And we're still going to be okay? What the state considers?
Showed you the slide on property tax collection. We're at about the same percentage, give or take just a little bit, as we were this time last year. So we're on track to make property tax. Sales tax, if March is a decrease of twenty five percent, that's March, April, May, and June are decreases of twenty five percent, we'll lose about one point one, one point two, five million in sales tax. But you go to Lowe's, or you go to the grocery stores and things, people are still buying, and Amazon has had some problems. That's one of the things. During the recession, we didn't collect sales tax from Amazons. You know, I think people buying online may help us not feel the full decrease for the current year too. But we've only got December's sales tax in, I guess, last Thursday or Friday, and that number's not part of the presentation. So we'll start to see how bad it can be, but right now, it's a crapshoot.
Well, I appreciate your approach on preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. That's a very good, you know, route to take on this, so.
Well, and I guess I need to say this. We have been stockpiling some vacant positions, especially in folks that are in positions teleworking. It is much easier to get to July one and hold positions vacant than need money and have to balance it on field positions. If you have to... With unemployment so high, it's not my intent to have to lay off or riff people, that if we can hold vacant positions, yeah, workload goes up on the employees you do keep, but it also keeps people in a job. And right now, we're not looking at positions that aren't vacant. So hopefully, we can save some money through the vacancy too.
I guess my earlier question about the fund balance, that zone that the state considers as a healthy county, excuse me, a healthy county, obviously, we're going to take a hit on it. I mean, is there any way of predicting where we might land at this time? It might be a premature question, but...
Yeah, there's so many moving parts. I would hate to say, so June thirtieth of nineteen, we were at thirty seven percent. But keep in mind, we pulled out money in the winter or the fall to buy voting machines, and we just pulled out another seven fifty to give the schools to help build the facility or renovate the facility. The sales tax was doing great, ten percent over, so that may help the decline that we're going to have in March, April, May, and June. So I'm kind of avoiding the question on purpose because there's a lot of moving parts, and it's tricky. If we budgeted a great deal of that three point six million to balance based on increases in health insurance, and if that trend, and we only have two months of Aetna experience, that number can help bail us out too. But right now, you know, you're kind of... It's uneasy. It's uneasy.
I understand.
Do you feel like maybe by the eighteenth, which is just two weeks away, that it'll give you a better indication of getting the numbers from April to kind of project maybe what we're going to see in the next couple of months?
We'll have a better idea. We'll have a better idea on sales tax number. We'll have a new number on property tax collections. We'll have a new number from Aetna, and then we can work with our EMS billing folks to see where that number's at. And we may have two weeks more of vacant positions.
I was kind of wondering, Julie, what do you think about all this? Because you've done budgets forever. And by the way, I'll just say, Greg Sheepin just sent an email and said, we've got our eighteenth case of COVID, so throw that out there. Just more pleasant news, but unpleasant news, rather. But Julie, what do you think? I mean, you've seen budgets time and time again, and I was just curious what... Because I've never...
I've never seen a pandemic before.
Yeah.
And I think when Bryant said he talked to a lot of people, and they gave him a lot of advice, and then they said, but who knows? Who knows what's going to happen? I think that we... Bryant's budget is very conservative. In the next few weeks, we might be able to make it less conservative on the revenue side, but on the expense side, seven million from fund balance is huge, especially when this year, we're also taking about seven million from fund balance. So we were very fortunate. We came in with a thirty seven percent fund balance. That's very good. We have the potential to drop down close to twenty percent over the next two years. I hope it won't last all the way into 2021.
Okay.
But I don't know. I mean, I... This is something new. None of us have seen this before, and it's certainly different from the oh eight crash. Even when we had the oh eight crash, we could look back at the depression. It was not as bad as the depression. We don't know what this is going to do.
Right.
Yeah, that's the problem with this. You just don't know everyone know what's going to end, you know? Or what... We don't even know what the economic... I mean, y'all are just basically stabbing at things in the dark. I mean, I appreciate Bryant calling, his friend in Durham. You know, it sounds like he's gotten the top people in the state, I mean, asking about... But I mean, it is just going to be an opinion in the end, and we hope that we guessed right, but...
And even the NCAACC tried to give us a little guidance, but it almost didn't make sense. I mean, when you look at the rest of the year being ten percent down on sales tax, maybe it will be, maybe it won't be, if people are doing more online shopping, that's great.
That's true.
But there are people out of work who aren't doing any shopping.
And that's where it'll come, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we're...
And in restaurants, nobody's going to restaurants except for takeout, and they're just barely making it, a lot of them, so.
And tourism is a huge, huge part of Haywood County, and it's, you know, flat now. I mean, it's completely gone. When it starts to come back and things start to come back, we'll have maybe a little bit better idea, but who knows what's going to happen in the fall?
Right.
It's hard. I don't... I mean, it's been a hard budget. All you can do, you can do is just sort of shooting in the dark.
Yeah. Well, it's been a hard budget, and I feel like we've not really given y'all a lot of direction, if you will. I think we've just kind of let you guys, you know, because we haven't been able to... I mean, everything's just so... It's just not exact like it usually is. You know, usually, you're looking at these few percent, and the state can tell you what to do for sales tax, because they look at trends, and they're almost always right on. But with this, it's, you know, you just don't know, so...
No, we don't know. And I think that once we do start opening up again, assuming we don't have another round of this, that people will start buying. They've got pent up, you know, they did after nine eleven. They did. They started buying again.
Yeah. Well, I do appreciate that we were in the financial shape, and I appreciate, you know, their passports and Kirk and Bill Upton and Mark Swanger and Michael Sarals, and Brandon was on passports too, that put us in that position because in oh eight, in oh nine, we weren't in that position. Because I remember in oh nine, we did make drastic cuts, and we just... We didn't even... We made cuts, but it's not like we'd cut out seven million, you know? Or, I mean, we cut out, you know, maybe a couple.
We made some painful cuts back then, and it wasn't seven million. You're right about that. I mean, thankfully, we have a good, solid fund balance, or we did at the end of 2019.
Right.
I mean, that's why we're able to keep some of our expenses in operating up. I don't think we've cut operating really at all. And you could see, when you looked at the difference in last year and this year, operating for governments doesn't go down when you have something happen to the economy. And especially with it being the pandemic, our health services are going up and up and up.
Right. Yeah, in a pandemic, there's some of our services that are... That work harder than others. I know everybody in here has, has worked a bunch of time over, and our staff... I can't think of any department that's just really slow. I mean, really. I mean, if anything, everything's extra, extra, extra. And that's the way it is for government. I know a lot of people in private business want to say, well, you know, I have to do it in my business. Well, government didn't like business in that way because we... Our revenues, usually when things are bad, government's busier, a lot busier. And then when things are good, government's not very busy, and business is busy. So sometimes, you can't look at that in those terms. And I know, like Patrick and Dr. Javon, there's no telling what their hours are, and I've heard what some of y'all's were, and, you know, like Dave and Chris and, you know, and Bryant and Tracy, and you, Julie. I know it's been... I know y'all spent a lot of time. I appreciate it. I want to say that.
We'll just have to see what happens. This is the toughest budget I've ever seen.
Yeah. And plus, you're having to keep up with all these expenditures under the FEMA. You know, it's like, well, you've got to put that in that category. So you just have one more thing you've got to add to your budget.
Right.
Keeping protocols and stuff.
Yeah, and hopefully, we'll get reimbursed for it. We're already seeing some reimbursements from the state for some of the health department expenses and some of the... That they've had to spend for this pandemic. So we're separating those from what FEMA will pay for, and hopefully, we'll have all that organized within the next few weeks.
We were talking earlier about the weekend bill upstate legislature. Do you have any insight on what might be coming back to Haywood County over this relief package they passed over the weekend?
No. I've heard that there's a lot of money that's coming this way though for multiple different reasons, and... But I don't have a dollar amount. I sure don't.
We may know more about that at the next meeting also.
Right. We could.
At least when we went into this, I think we were in the best financial shape we've ever been in, as I've been a commissioner, maybe ever so.
We are, definitely.
So that's a real big plus for Haywood County right now. And we can go into this looking at a seven million dollar hit to our fund balance and not be, you know, and know that we're going to be able to, you know, it gives us time to be able to ride it out, and maybe we'll pick it back up, you know? That's my hope. I think everybody will get to doing the social distancing and the protocols in the businesses, and maybe we'll get things back up, at least back where we... Almost where we were.
I hope we will. I hope we can open up soon and get everything back to normal as soon as possible.
And you normal. Thank you, Julie. So do you... What do you need from us, Bryant?
Maybe just some ideas of when you'd like to get together and talk in detail about the budget. Commissioner Pless and I talked during a break, so I think he's off next week, so I'll get with him.
Okay.
Set up some meetings, and we'll do a deep dive on this, talk about, you know, what you'd like to see. I know, got some input from you about what you'd like to see in the budget, and most of that's gone out the window.
Out the window.
That earlier meeting's gone.
It's going to be a great budget. Nobody's going to be happy about anything in it this year, so.
Like grab a hold and hang on.
That's right.
Well, I know, for instance, Tommy's on the fairground board, and they basically just shut down the fairgrounds, because the fairgrounds was all about events with people.
Yeah.
People coming into the county, people coming here to put heads in beds, and it's all about people, even local events.
Our manager still hadn't got his unemployment. I mean, it's just a quidmire.
You know, but yet, those buildings still have to be maintained, so, you know? But, you know, that's just one aspect of... One small aspect of what's happened. So we need to get with you for individual meetings, you know, and then you'll present a recommended budget at the next... And then we'll have our public hearing on the twenty sixth, so.
If any of those dates need to change, we certainly can. June the first is pretty early to adopt a budget, but, you know, it might be good to get it over with.
Would it be beneficial to wait till June first before we... Would that allow you more time to gather more data?
I'm required to present a budget to you before the end of May, so I have to present... Well, we could do it May the twenty sixth, but the next scheduled meeting is the eighteenth. We don't have to adopt June first. We would just have to adopt by the end of June. But like I said, we amend the budget almost every meeting. If we get data that we need to go a different direction, it'd be great. But ultimately, if sales tax comes in under, and we've shown we're going to use seven million in fund balance, but sales tax comes in over budget by June thirtieth, it washes in the CAFR anyway, so it doesn't really matter. As I think, the big key is that we do a continuous surveillance of where the budget is next year, that we make sure that revenues are coming in where they should be, you know? If they're coming in over, we'll be pleasantly surprised, but...
So is there even a way to get back down to what we used last year for this budget? Is there a way to do that? I know some of those mandates are increased. That's kind of the question. I know some things are just completely without our control.
It would be extremely difficult, considering the pay plan or the market adjustments we made and the shifts from the state to us. Yeah, we can cut, but it will have an impact on services, but that's not unique. I mean, county and city governments do that all the time. We would just need to talk about, you know, eliminating some services instead of just spreading the pain. I think that would get us in a position to move forward to where, you know, let's just say you get out of the business of X, and it doesn't come back the following year. But it's tough to get two point, I guess, six million dollars or give or take.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if it was even capable. Yeah, that's why I was wondering if it was even capable of being accomplished without...
My experience, it's so unpalatable that we would just, we can't do that. It's going to be tough.
So would that equate to sending people home eventually?
I'm sorry.
Would that equate to sending people home eventually, or are you talking about just basically cutting everything down?
It would. Almost everything we do is people serving people, like the fairgrounds, right? That's, and all of our services, most of it is somebody doing a service, and so we'd have to look hard at employees.
I got anything else?
Thank you.
It's 3:30, so... Long day.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, can we, I just, what did I do? Just adjourn? Oh, okay.
I move we adjourn the budget meeting. Sec immediately.
Oh, does it favor say aye? Okay, we're adjourned. Everybody stays.